Back in council, I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for January sixteenth, twenty twenty five quarter with adoption of the agendas. Want to make that motion, Council Paperers, Council Chair, all in favor? Motion's carried. Any adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole from December twelfth, Council Palmer seconded by Council Lucio, all in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Saying none, I'll move on to announcements for the mayor. I'm going to make the same statement I made yesterday, just that we're starting a little earlier in the day, one P M start time, hoping that we can complete these meetings in two to three hours max. If not, I will recess them and we'll start the next day. Moving on to nine A staff reports, Rebelstoke's housing action plan implementation. Mister Simon, do you have a presentation or brief overview?
To the chair, no formal presentations. Staff are available to answer questions through the review. This is just in a nutshell, similar to what we presented last December, just a general status update for council on the twenty twenty two housing action plan that was adopted in August of that year, and giving council a general synopsis of where we're at with implementing the main foundational actions and the primary strategies contained in that plan.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council regarding that? Seeing none, is there any action that you want from us, Mister Simon?
Through the chair.
Just more for information.
To the chair, just more for information, and again fulfilling our obligations and importance of that plan, and in general, no recommendations at this time to undertake a new housing action plan or to amend the existing one.
Great, all right, thank you. Moving on to item nine B, O C P implementation, again, any overview or presentation?
Through your worship, all of council, no formal presentation, but just a brief overview again. This is coming from all of senior management reporting on our obligation in the twenty twenty two official community plan to provide council with a status update on how implementation of the community's official community plan is going. So we did this back in December twenty twenty three as well, and one of the key things, I think, for council to really take away from this, housing is obviously a very hot topic in the community. We are hitting the targets on a year-over-year basis that are outlined in the official community plan to try and see more of our housing stock become multi-unit and ground-oriented housing as opposed to single-family. In twenty twenty four, about eighty percent of building permits issued for new residential construction were for multi-unit or ground-oriented housing, which is awesome because about eighty percent of our existing housing stock is single-family right now, which does not lend itself to affordability for the average community member. So we're seeing some, hopefully in the future, some of these prices and seeing some diverse types of housing stock come into the community. And also importantly, the attachment to this report, the action item matrix. So the O C P contains one hundred and thirteen action items that spread across various departments of the city, ranging all the way from development services to fire protection services, parks recreation, engineering, et cetera. And seeing the difference between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four that's outlined in the report, an additional four actions were completed in the O C P in twenty twenty three. So we're at eleven actions of one hundred and thirteen are now fully complete. Twenty-seven of the actions are in progress, thirty-eight of them are ongoing, and thirty-seven are not initiated. So you are seeing progress year over year on responding to the actions contained in the O C P. So that's one that's important to keep in mind. And as we move forward, no formal amendments are recommended to the O C P right now, but one that Development Services wanted to flag is the references in the O C P land use section to neighborhood plans. Council may recall, in early twenty twenty four, we had canceled the Johnson Heights Neighborhood Plan in favor of seeing a developer-led comprehensive development plan. Since we did changes to our procedures by law to mandate that, so rather than tax care paying for these neighborhood plans, we have the developers paying for something that would be very comparable to ensure comprehensive development in some areas of the city. We should think about if that is the route that council's comfortable going, and if so, then we should remove the references to neighborhood plans in the O C P at some point. It's not super pressing right now, but it is something that we shouldn't let fall by the wayside to make sure that the O C P stays current and up to date. And aside from that, we're going to need to do an amendment to the O C P for the corresponding zoning bylaw that council had considered and gave first reading to this past Tuesday. And then before the end of twenty twenty five, in accordance with provincial legislation, we will be required to amend the official community plan to reference the most recent housing projection numbers that are required from the interim housing needs and demands assessment that came out in December twenty twenty four. So a couple amendments you'll see, but they're either legislatively required or related to the zoning bylaw comprehensive rewrite.
And then can we deal with that neighborhood plan stuff at that time after we're doing amendments?
Through your worship, we could certainly do it. Staff would recommend doing it when we update it to include the new housing projection numbers.
Okay, all right, appreciate that. Any comments, questions from council? Councilor Chair.
Just for clarity through the chair, in light of what you just said, Mister Simon, you don't want a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Through your worship, Councilor Chair, I think at this time, it's just more of a report for information and no recommendation, as we're not looking for any changes to be directed for the O C P at this time.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Thank you. Departmental updates, Corporate Services, twenty twenty four annual report, Ms. Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor Solz. So I don't have a presentation or anything. I believe that there was a council member that requested quarterly reports from every department. So the communications coordinator prior to Christmas came up with a template for all of us to use, so it's consistent going across the board. This was the first stab at corporate services. We don't have a lot of tangible things that we can provide you stats with, so I kind of did my best, but if there are things that you think are missing that you would like to see in quarterly reports from corporate, I'm happy to include them.
Appreciate that. I like what I see, and appreciate the fact that you've come to this level, come bring this forward. Councilor Palmer, did you have a question?
The, well, I concur that this is helpful, and even though there's not a lot of statistical kind of things, there is some there, and that said, oh yeah, that's kind of interesting how we're progressing, and it provides some highlights of the department that's sometimes sort of lost and washed.
True. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilor Stevens?
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to thank Ms. Floyd for putting this together. It is easy to read and informative. Just a question, where would the public be able to find this if they're so inclined to look for it?
Well, Council State and Hearst, through the chair, it is published in the Committee of the Whole agenda. If council would prefer, we can probably have the communications coordinator set up a designated spot on the website.
That would be great, just for future being able to track trends and easily find the information.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
That's fine. Yeah, I think that raises an interesting point on the website, because I think it's fairly well-known by anybody that tries to use the city website, how problematic it is, and we're hoping that that's going to be passed in the budget for those updates. So that might be something that staff considers putting in this report, because it would be nice if there was a nice tidy spot these things went and was easy to search and find. Yeah, so that's, that's good. Yeah, that's good.
You're okay, we're just leaving it through this one?
Yes, Mayor Solz. Just a note that there are no communication statistics in there, because our communication coordinator is off on medical leave for the time being. Once she is back, we will bring forward a whole twenty twenty four communications separate report, and then going forward, it will be implemented.
Thank you. Councilor Mind?
Yeah, through the chair, with regards to the Corporate Services report or any other report, what is the, any other quarterly staff report, what is the process for making requests to add something to the report or include extra information?
Ms. Floyd?
Councilor Orlando, we don't have a formal process. I would suggest that if you have, if any of council has any specifics they would like to ask, they can email the department director directly and then have discussions. We probably have a discussion as the senior leadership team.
I just want one follow-up question, thank you, I appreciate the response regarding the website upgrade that's proposed in the budget, putting something as a web, a new webpage is one thing, our existing file server system that is problematic in the sense that it's difficult to find and access documents. Is there a plan for the latter in the website upgrade? Is that something that is going to be upgraded so that the documents are more easily accessible?
Absolutely, Councilor Orlando, through the chair, the communications coordinator right now is going through and trying to make the current platform more user-friendly. We are going through and getting rid of obsolete documents so that when you do search something, the current will come up. So it's a long process, there are a lot of documents on the website right now that are out of date, but we are picking our way through it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, just follow up, and it's more of a technical one, on the actual, though, file server side, so not the website itself, but where, for example, council documents are uploaded, to give a more context, I'm wondering if that is going to be reformatted or reformed. So for example, what will happen is a community member or stakeholder will seek something out, and it's very challenging for them to find the information. So like as an example, somebody recently asked for an update on what the short-term rental opt-in, opt-out thing is, and to provide them the information, I had to go back through the council agenda, look for it, and just having that internal knowledge of where it was located, find the report, take the link and attach that to them, and then go back for other documents to provide an update for the documents, but that person who doesn't have that background, they cannot arrive at that on the file server side, not the website side. So I'm wondering with that website upgrade, if that sort of underlying vendor system will have any changes attached to it? Because that would be, that would be the root of the problem, because if it's simply a website upgrade, that is not going to solve that issue.
That's correct. So, Councilor Orlando, the document center and the website are linked. There, that's where the outdated documents are. What the communications coordinator intends to do is put specific search criteria with the documents, so if you search short-term rental, then only the current relevant documents will show up.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, because, yeah, right now, the search is weighted towards, for example, how long it's been there, it's not, hasn't been properly calibrated, so people Google something and get a result from ten years ago, or four hundred results before they get to the most recent relevant one, so it becomes impossible to find it. That could be done, I imagine, overnight by just changing those parameters, I don't think that needs to be done as part of a web overhaul. I don't have access to the backend, but I think it can be done pretty quick.
All right, that's fine. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, let's move on to Fire Rescue Services, Chief Horace is in the room, annual report for twenty twenty four. Chief Horace, do you have an overview that you'd like to go over or presentation?
I can certainly provide an overview for your worship. Would you like me to bring it up on screen or to speak to it?
You speak to it. We've got, we've got it in our package.
Even better. Yeah, so just some stats on twenty twenty four, a little bit different from last year, following the format, we want to all be consistent, so we're, you know who it's coming from, and it'll help us be consistent as well. So some highlights for council, the suppression side of things here, incident response subcategories, the structure fires remain pretty stable at sixteen. The twenty twenty four call volume has increased sixteen percent over the previous year, however, the five-year trend is showing an increase of forty percent from twenty twenty up to twenty twenty four. I already added some spark lines there, so you can see the trend over the five years. It does change back and forth, but generally speaking, those are going up. Bottom of the page, the volunteer attrition, it succeeded the recruitment rate for its second year in a row, so our total net gain is actually a loss of two. I'd show you my calendar, but it's too busy with interviews for new volunteers to onboard in twenty twenty five, so I'm doing twenty-plus interviews over the next week to start in February.
That's awesome to hear, thank you.
Yeah. Fire Prevention Division, next page, it is, our fire and life safety inspections are up by fifteen percent over twenty twenty. Twenty twenty three had a significant increase due to, I believe it was the short-term rentals that came online there. Important to note here that we have one fire inspector and one person can only achieve so many fire inspections in a year, and so this is something that we're looking at, how we can add some resources within our existing staff to improve. Inspectable properties has increased dramatically. Mister Simon has mentioned a number of eleven hundred properties, dwelling units coming either somewhere in the permitting process, so that indicates that Rebelstoke is growing. Some of those will become inspectable properties as well. Fire investigation and property losses, as destructive fires occur, we're obligated to report those to the Office of Fire Commissioner for statistics and reporting. You'll see that trend come out every year from the B C officer, the fire commissioner. We had twenty fires that were reportable in two thousand twenty twenty four, with total losses estimated at one point three million dollars, of those values at risk of seven point four million, so that's a significant increase over previous years for those values. I don't have any information to indicate why those numbers have gone up so much, it could simply be the nature of the location of the fire. If there's a fire, for example, in the Downey Mill, that's a pretty valuable property, so values at risk could be quite extensive. We did have the Frontier Fire, I don't have the property values in my back pocket for those, but it's another one that could be a high value at risk. Yes, two reportable fires in the last quarter. We had a fire in the saw room at Downey there, and we also had a vehicle trailer on smoldering way at the Northwoods property there, so crews made quick action and prevented it from popping like the last one that we had. That one shook my whole house, I thought somebody driven it inside my house, so remember that one pretty good. Fire investigations, public education, we had fifteen classrooms come through, the KDA, grade three. Daycare group visits, I think there was five or six, no, there was more than that. There's too many, too many little ones coming through the station to count them all. Fire prevention carried out with the fire evacuation drills at schools, several apartment buildings, and so have city buildings. The training division, number of NFPA one thousand and one firefighter, one and two qualified firefighters remains identical to twenty twenty three, however, one of those persons, Devin King, was recently hired, so that just shifted that number from one column to the next. The one thousand and two qualified apprehensive operator and drivers, we've lost some numbers there because of our volunteer attrition, so some of those were volunteer members that have moved on to, I hope, bigger and better things. The fire officers have increased from four to seven, so that's the education to be, take more in-command role as a leader on the fire scene, not just in the, in the station, but as knowing how to run an operation, as well as some of those higher-level, we could call them supervisory skills.
Right.
Those are exclusively within the career group. Next one, emergency management, senior staff completed several courses in emergency management, alertable app training, so that's the one that we've subscribed to with the C S R D that we use to push out any of those alerts for the community in Area V, and in Area B, I should say. The Rebelstoke area emergency management plan has been updated, our E P C has been working on an evacuation plan, so that's in draft right now, I believe. The E S S group, headed by Brenda Jones, has been very active, they've done several group training sessions over the year and recruited several new members. They've lost some as well, but they've also recruited some. Finally, on the E O C was opened for the duration of evacuation alerts in Area B, as we cover all of that, we had one in Shelter Bay and one at Trout Lake, and we had the E O C open, I think it was over forty days with that, and while it was in the beginnings there, we had a number of the senior staff work in the E O C as an experience, gaining opportunity, learn some of what is happening in there. It was a great experience, I think, for, for everyone, for myself, it was quite good. I filled in for Evan while he was away a couple of times, and I know that the communications coordinator was absolutely thrilled to be a part of that, she felt it was a really valuable experience for her to, to be invited to partake in that, and she's looking forward to the next one, I'm sure. Fire Smart, Fire Smart coordinator has been extremely busy, I'm really, really pleased to report that Lauren Marfleet has made great progress on, I guess, implementing, introducing the Fire Smart principles into Rebelstoke with the help of B C Fire Smart. As you know, the community, fire, what was that one, Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan has been completed in the draft, we'll be bringing that forward to council in the very near future, and the Community Fire Smart Resiliency Committee has had new members just appointed, and I believe January twenty second will be our first in long-run meeting, and thank you to Councilor Stapenhurst for volunteering to be the chair on that, for working with you there. And that's all I have to update you with, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate that. Really appreciate the Fire Smart stuff, especially with what we're seeing down in Los Angeles, you know, and going from my home, and I will be spending some dollars this year and taking out a lot of vegetation, and hopefully making my neighborhood a better place, so appreciate that. Any other comments, Council Stickers?
Just a question through the chair, maybe either Director Simon or the Fire Chief could answer this question, but in regards to the Fire Smart program, do we have any, anything in our building services when we're looking at, you know, new buildings, and we're looking at the landscaping, and we're always seeing one hundred and twenty-five percent deposit, but is there anything in our, in our procedures that say that new buildings need to be Fire Smart?
Through the chair, Councilor Stapenhurst, we don't have, there's a few different tools that you can do it, we don't have a wildfire development permit area, which could apply to different forms of development in the city and specific areas, which would be effective wildfire interface, we don't have that established as of yet. One of the things we do right now in the department, and it's more voluntary, but we have the Fire Smart brochures that we issue with every building permit that goes out, so that people are aware of ways that they can landscape their properties and do other measures incorporated into their designs to effectively mitigate the impact of wildfires, but as of right now, those are the main tools that brochure's the main one.
But there's no, there's no requirements for people to be Fire Smart, is it the voluntary program?
Through the chair, the only one that's mandatory that I'm aware of is out at the resort, one of the subdivisions there had a wildfire covenant registered on it, so we make sure that that is addressed with each building permit that comes in.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that. Any other comments, questions, Chief, that's Paul?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Solz. Couple of questions and comments. So first on the recruitment, sounds like you're having some success. Those signs that you put out, did that create more interest? I think that was the first year that, is it, or maybe mine, the sign, the little?
Yeah, through your worship, the lawn boards.
Yeah.
This is our second year of using those. Last year, correction, twenty twenty three, we used the lawn boards and Facebook, and what we found was that most people when asked, like, how did you learn about this opportunity? They referenced the lawn boards by and far, so we put a lot more effort into that, and working with the communications coordinator, she's got some really good ideas about how we can improve those lawn boards for our next recruitment, so unfortunately, she's not available at this point, but hopefully next year we'll have a better air sign.
Oh, and then just on the school groups, thanks for, for doing that. I did note, one, I was going by the library there, and they had a school group, and they had a competition happening with hoses, it was so much fun, I took a little video, and I said, of course, I can't post this, kids, school kids and stuff, but would have been loved to, because it was just, everybody was having so much fun in, in there using the fire hoses, so good work. On the, so Mayor Solz, the, on the emergency management, so this, on stats, this goes back to the corporate officer's question on stats, it would be, it's something I wonder often, is how many of our staff are trained and to what level? So that would be a good thing, I'm not sure if it's Fire Department Administration, but stats of how many of our staff are trained to what level in emergency management, and then that would highlight, you know, if we're good, that's good, and if not, it would put some emphasis to improve those, so that's one that I would like to see.
Okay.
And then lastly, on the Fire Smart brochures, just following up a little bit with that, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity in the next taxation mailing to put those brochures in, or we catch sort of the beginning of the fire season, so just planning idea, you know, creating that opportunity. The last mailing that went out, I think it was with the business utilities or business license, there was planning to, an opportunity to add some stuff, so it's a great opportunity as the mailings are going out, anyway.
Let me talk to the partners about that, make sure we include some. Yeah, thanks for that.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Chief Horace?
Just a couple of things, if I may, through the chair, to Council Palmer's observation, yes, when, when the kids come through the school, we have a list of which kids we can, we can post and which ones we can't.
Right.
So greatly appreciate the opportunity to, to mention that, and thank you for taking that, the initiative to not do that. It's really fun to have those kids come through. And second, the question on the stats for the emergency management program, absolutely, that's something that we could include in our, in our quarter, I think that's a really good suggestion, so I'll include that as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Move on to our last report, Parks and Rec, fourth quarter report, Mr. Naro.
Thank you, your worship. So in the report, I've combined quarterly stats and year-end service level stats. So throughout the quarter, as you can see, that our numbers were up, we had a lot of regular community programs start this fall, utilizing the community center facility from October to December. With the Aquatic Center, we had seventy-four private lessons were booked amongst our regular Red Cross one lessons that we offer. The arena was in full swing with all our regular community programs, as well as the user group programs. We held multiple tournaments in the facility, arranging from U eighteen to U nine tournaments. Pretty much every weekend of the fall was booked with tournaments or games, there was very little opportunity for any public programs. That was a lot of feedback that we received from the community, is how come you're not running public skates? It, the schedule was jam-packed during the weekend, so we have some time now where we're able to offer more public opportunities during the weekends, so you'll see those come through. The parks this quarter was a lot slower, from October to December, we usually do fall maintenance and any capital project work within our parks, so we don't have a lot of stats for that. In terms of the year-end service level stats, I've got some graphs there and some highlights. With the Aquatic Center stats, you'll see that in twenty twenty four, we hit pre-pandemic levels. With the aquatic center stats, you'll see that in 2024, we hit pre-pandemic levels. Yes, we are down, we were down from last year's stats. However, last year's stats were reflective of the, um, different weather patterns we had. There was a lot of smoke in the air in 2023. There was a lot of road closures. So the facility was a lot busier than it was in 2024. The smoke wasn't as bad last year. So that is reflective of the numbers. But our numbers have trended towards pre-pandemic levels. Um, membership sales were up this year as well considerably. Um, we're not sure what the factor in that was, but definitely, uh, for the positive, they definitely increased. Sports field bookings were up as well as what, up this year as well. We added an additional slow pitch league. So we have 30 teams with over 500 participants. And then as, as usual, youth soccer, uh, takes up a lot of field space. Special events as well. They've increased slightly since 2023. Our, um, annual events that occur every year, winter carnival, winter carnival, bike fest, trash and show, revy live. They all took place. Um, annual community center facility usage as well. You'll see that we did dip a bit this year compared to 2023. Um, and for the same reason, a lot of our spaces were being utilized in 2023 to get out of the weather conditions. And then, um, 2022, you'll see a peak, peak usage in 2022. And that defines a lot of the meeting space room requirements because of COVID. So we had a lot of, um, organizations using our, our meeting spaces so that they could socially distance. And then in 2023, it dropped off. But peaked again because of the weather conditions and then we stabilized in 2024. So some of the highlights is we ran, uh, 26 youth programs in 2024 with 321 participants. We had 27 adult programs with a range of about 806 drop-in visits during the, those programming activities. And then on top of it all, I thought it would be, um, good for you guys to see the number of customer service inquiries that come through the desk, which is well over 12,000 a year. And that comes through a desk that manages all the aquatic center admissions, the multi-purpose room bookings. Um, and then just general administration tasks. So there's, there, they're fueling a lot of different things at that desk. It's like a little command center. Um, and then stats for the annual ice, arena ice hours as well. You can see there's quite an increase in ice hours. So overall, a pretty good year, high numbers in all aspects of parks and rec. And then the last page, I've just highlighted some community events that took place this year.
Council, any questions for Mr. Naro? Introduce him.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Souls. Um, yeah, through to Ms. Naro. Um, just looking at the annual aquatic center visits, um, we're back about 2019 numbers. Um, our, was our service level, like hours that were open in days of the week, similar to pre-pandemic? Or are we still operating below that?
We're operating below that. So pre, uh, 2019, we were operating Monday to Sunday. Monday to Friday, 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM. Saturdays 10 to 8 and Sundays noon to 8. Right now, we're currently operating, um, Monday, Wednesday, 6:30 to 7:00, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, 10 to 7:00, Saturdays 10 to 5:30 and Sundays we're closed.
Okay. So if we are hopeful of getting more service hours going each next year through the budget, we should see those numbers kind of pass what we had this year?
Correct. And just, uh, since we're talking about aquatic centers. I just posted three positions for the facility. So I'm down three positions.
Wow.
Just when you think you're up.
It's always a case.
Yeah.
It's always something.
But good prospects. So I'm very optimistic.
Council Orlando, then councillor Lucio.
Uh, yeah, through the chair, uh, thanks, Mr. Naro, for the presentation. I have a few questions. They're all, uh, pretty simple. So I'll just try and get them out at once. You mentioned there was no, um, uh, information on what's underlying the almost doubling of membership, um, sales. But I'm wondering if there's any other insight related to that, like what would be driving, uh, that number to increase already so much from 2019 to 2023 and then almost double? Uh, second is just a detailed question on annual community center facility usage. It lists a number, for example, 504 kitchen uses, that hours or people?
Hours.
It's hours, how many hours the facility's has been booked? Um, and then finally, that's a big number that staff have to deal with, with inquiries for, um, service inquiries. Um, do you track, um, the nature of those inquiries, uh, for you to, uh, breaking it down into categories with the goal of, for example, reducing ones that, uh, are, for example, I couldn't find it on the website. So I'm giving you guys a call now, um, or, uh, other kind of information that could be referred. So I'm wondering if we can, uh, reduce that workload and provide more, more efficient services by analyzing that data. And then one last one, do you track, um, when someone takes on a membership? Do you capture them on a database such as an email list to let them know those services and whatnot? So.
Through your worship. So yes, we do capture them on a database and we have a communication module within our membership sales software system. So they do get any updates or changes to the pool schedule. Um, we try to be really mindful of what we're sending them. So they don't get, so they don't feel like they're just getting spam from us all the time. So yeah, schedule updates would go to them. Um, in terms of tracking the service inquiries, so we do break it down between in-person visits and phone calls. Uh, we have discussed categorizing everything. And we have to just work through some logistics on that. We have, um, three different employees tracking the stats. Plus any casual workers that come into the, to the work environment as well. So it's just making sure that people are accurately tracking them and putting the numbers in the way they should be in order to get the good information that we want to. So for now, it's just broken out between phone and customer, face-to-face customer.
Thank you.
Council Lucio.
Uh, thank you. So it's just one more question when it comes to this for field bookings. Um, the numbers on there, is that bookings or is that hours that are booked?
That is the number of bookings.
Okay. Um, and I know like our fields are open May to end of October, hopefully. Um, it'd be great to see kind of how that falls out month by month to see where peak usage is, where lower usage is, just so we can try to get more usage when the fields aren't necessarily being booked as much, um, just so we can try to drive a little bit more around you.
Yes, we can do that for sure.
Any other question, councillor Paul?
Um, thank you, Mayor Souls, and I thank, uh, Lori for all the stats. It's kind of, kind of let me start to dive in. You've been very proactive on this and of course then we want more and more. You're doing a great job.
What did I miss?
So, so it's interesting because, of course, uh, you know, I'm, I was looking, uh, and thank you to councillor Orlando for your questions. I had similar ones. But like the customer, uh, service inquiries, you know, it's, you know, it's an interesting, uh, number. It's, uh, uh, and so I was sort of wondering the same thing. Okay. Well, what if that's, and, um, and then, you know, how reliable those stats are again, because that training and then if it gets too busy, it's too crazy. How can you, you know, the staff actually capture each one? So I do, I do have a question. So if someone comes in and is, has a public works complaint or is annoyed about taxes and they come to the desk, say something, is, is that a customer service thing? And then they'll say, go to city hall or whatever. Um, the, and so that's, you know, those, those would be interesting to be broken down. But I could see it might be just too laborious as well. Um, that number. So that's from, uh, 2024.
2024, yes.
Yeah. So if, if we are recording them, um, for the future, next, uh, year end, it might be interesting to see year to year what that's, what's doing. And it might prompt, uh, further to Orlando, you know, what can, you know, do we start investing more tools? So people, you know, have a kiosk that they can go find out something or those kind of things. Of course, that takes resources. Um, just, uh, the, the other, uh, through the mayor again, um, thank you for the, the number of years and having that pre-COVID baseline. I think that's really helpful for us to understand where things are going. I note on the aquatic center, so we're back to, uh, on the stats to pre-COVID. But there has been some operational changes, one being that we scooted everybody out for the breakup lunchtime or whatever. So arguably there might be more visits because of that. I don't know if there is or not. Um, I, he, and then the other sort of note, again, going further to councillor Orlando in that, um, or no, it was councillor Lucio on the, uh, reduced hours. So our, uh, our numbers per period of time is actually up quite a bit actually. And that's just starting to show the, 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 the interest of the community. You hear lots and we, we as councillors hear, you know, more aquatic hours, more aquatic hours. So, um, thank you for providing that and being on, you know, doing that. It's tricky. I, I certainly get comments from the public saying, push harder for more hours and say, well, become a lifeguard. So. Yeah. But okay. Thank, but thank you very much.
Good. Any other comments, questions from council? Mr. Naro, thank you. Appreciate your time and your input. All right, council, we're at the end of our meeting. Um, I may ask for termination. Councillor Stapenhurst, councillor Devon Olin-Fisher, this one's carried, you're now done. Thank you, staff.